Hello, everybody. We apologize for being about five minutes late getting started. We are coming out of a closed session and there is nothing to report from that session. So we will call to order the Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 meeting of the Town Council. If we can have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Ivasio.
Here. Okay, first up is open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the Town Council concerning any item not on the Council's agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless otherwise specified, and the public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item as it comes up. So it looks like we have someone at the microphone. Should you, would you like an introduction or would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you.
Okay, go for it.
I think the microphone's on and my name's Peter Chase. I'm here on regarding Menke Park tonight and the great event that town staff put on for the introduction of this to the area. So it was very effective in getting people out, getting them aware of it, and we hope to see more of that occurring as it rolls out. And I think that the plan can progress with the Council's support for engineering and planting for the park. It needs to move forward a little bit, and I think they've got that in their sights. I think that what became obvious was that there are two issues, the parking and then the park. And they're, they need to be bifurcated and the park can move forward, we hope, very well, and get that plan further established. And we'd like to see the Town Council get behind it so that by summer, we know what the plan is. So and I don't know what staff has in mind, but we hope that's the case and that it continues to progress well and toward a goal of creating something that everybody in the community and that area stands behind. The merchants down there commented to me that, you know, their businesses are their lifeblood. They want that area to function well and the park to them, despite its beauty, need is secondary to them having a business that works down there. That's really all I needed to say about it, but it was great that staff put that on, got the ball rolling, and we hope to see more of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, there's lots of exciting things happening up in the square these days. So it's really a fun time to see things coming, coming to fruition. Yes.
Hi, my name's Aaron Parsons. I live on Montecito Drive above Menke Park. I have three points I'd like to make with regards to Menke Park. Firstly, I approve of the Corder Madera Foundation's plan to improve the park itself, provided that they don't include an expanding the park area. Secondly, I do not approve of any changes that would constrain traffic or parking around the park. In a version of the Parks and Rec master plan that I've seen, the plan considers several ideas to turn the area around Menke Park into a more pedestrian-friendly plaza-type area. And I think this is misguided because it considers that area to be primarily for recreation. Right? When the truth is, anyone that frequents Menke Park knows that it's primarily heavily used and vital facility for vehicular traffic, right? So it might not sound great, but that's sort of the fact. That square provides the only route of access for about 80 households on Montecito Drive and Grove Avenue. That's 80 households that use that square every day for their daily commutes, traffic, school runs, shopping, countless delivery vehicles, emergency services, and so on. Not to mention the businesses that Peter referenced as well. So any changes or restrictions to traffic flow and parking at Menke Park are going to negatively impact those residents, those businesses. And not to mention, if we restrict traffic flow around Menke Park, we're going to load up more congestion at the traffic lights in that area at Redwood and Corder Madera Avenue, which is going to affect the broader community in that area. So my ask on that point is that the master plan for Menke Park be revised to consider that it's not only a recreational area, but it's also a vital traffic facility. We have to consider that. And my third point is in regards to safety. So at the community meeting, which I agree with Peter, was really good. I was glad that we did that. I asked why we were considering changes to traffic flow, and I was told that it was to protect or avoid pedestrian, or it was to help with pedestrian safety. So in my opinion, being a resident in that area, pedestrian safety is not currently an issue in Menke Park. But I believe that some of the actions that are being taken, such as this micro-business pilot program, which are expressly aimed at bringing pedestrian traffic to the square, I think that that could create a safety issue. And I'm asking that the town consider safety issues in relation to the development of that area and the pilot programs and so on. Given that, as I've explained, restricting traffic flow is not really a viable option. Those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time coming out again tonight. Really appreciate it. Okay, anybody else in the audience like to speak at public time? Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm Mike Strosser, live on Birch Avenue. And I wanted to come here to express my support of some of the work that's being done around the barn, which is the building that's next to Cafe Verde. And I've heard plans for what that could be in the vision of that entire shopping center, for that matter, what the potential is, and it sounds amazing. And so I want to support that project because I think it would really be a new hub for the community. So maybe dealing with traffic flow, let's direct the community to that center. I kind of feel that there's kind of a little bit of a lack of a center here, a lack of center there. Is it Town Center? Is it the Town Park? But this would really bring the community together around one gathering place where we could have events and special services that they can gather all around that community can participate in. It's going to be right next to the community center, so it's going to be kind of central, that whole component. But I know it's a lot of work and it seems like there's initial phases that would just convert the barn, which many people don't even know that that barn is actually even there. So that, that's a great starting point. And then ultimately, I support the transformation of that entire shopping center to be something that, you know, like the Barlow in Sebastopol was, got converted into, that's an amazing place. So that's all I want to do, just to express my support. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Karen Gerbotsia. I live over on the east side. Is it oversight or inadvertence that we didn't do the salute to the flag?
I'm sorry.
Is it oversight, inadvertence, what, that we didn't? Because it says here we do the roll call and the salute to the flag.
We did the salute to the flag at the beginning of the meeting at 6:00 PM. But we had a closed session at 6:00 PM, and I was told that if we did the pledge of allegiance then, then we didn't need to do it again when we opened up the second meeting. You're welcome. Is there anybody else? Anybody else online?
We do not have any hands raised from our attendee online, and we didn't receive any email public comment for open time.
Okay, great. I know we're not allowed to speak, talk, discuss the items in any detail, but I do want to say, I recently read that the barn behind Cafe Verde is one of the oldest buildings in the entire town. It was the original corporate yard barn. And because it's attached to Cafe Verde, it's kind of invisible. I think of it as the Harry Potter building. Nobody sees it, but it's there. So everybody should go check it out. Okay, moving on. We have no presentations tonight. Up next is the consent calendar. And that is items 4A through 4G. And anyone may pull an item off of the consent calendar if they decide that it needs discussion before we take a vote on it. So if anyone would like to pull an item from the consent calendar, anyone on the council, public, online?
No hands raised from attendees online. No requests were received to pull any items from the consent calendar. And I will add, just for the public, we did have a revision to item 4F that was sent to the council this morning, and it was uploaded to the website this morning as well for the public to have access to. And it was just a change in the design on the banner.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve consent items 4A through 4G.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Andrews. Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Ivasio.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to business item 6A, which is to receive and discuss the presentation on the unfunded accrued liability, UAL outlook provided by NHA advisors. And I'm assuming we're going to hear from Adam on that tonight.
Yes, I'm happy to kick this off, and I want to make sure we also have our consultants. Oh, we do. That's great. We have Mike, Mike Meyer, and Craig Hill behind me on the screen, who will be doing the bulk of the presentation tonight, but I would like to introduce them. NHA Advisors is the town's municipal consultant. The last time the council heard from NHA Advisors, it was helping, it was in relation to helping us consider financing options related to the major sanitary sewer construction projects that are currently underway in town. And ultimately, they supported us in procurement of $10 million in funds for those projects. They're here tonight, obviously on a different matter, but have been advising us on our pension outlook and our unfunded liability, as many of you know already. So I wanted to bring this item before the council this evening, essentially as a continuation of our January strategic planning workshop discussion, where we looked at the financial projections over the next two years and looked down the line and started to see deficits in our operating budget. We discussed at that meeting some strategies to start to think about, to address those potential deficits that are on the horizon. So I wanted NHA to provide a status of the town's pension liability this evening, how our pension trust and pension reserve could potentially be used in future years as one piece of a financial strategy moving forward. Also, it's been some time since this information has been presented to the council. And I think we last discussed this actually with the Finance Committee. We don't, obviously, we're in the middle of reforming the Finance Committee. So hopefully, this serves as a refresher to the council on this topic and really an opportunity to ask questions of our financial advisors about our pension obligations. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Mike for a presentation of the attachment. And you're, he's going to go over the slides that were included as an attachment to your staff report.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Am I coming in clearly?
You sound great, and extra credit for layman's terms.
Point taken. That was a great introduction by the city manager. So I think I'm just going to kick it off with the executive summary. And just to forewarn everyone, there's about 11 or 12 slides. We'll try to keep it under 15 minutes and then obviously available for, for questions after. So as the city manager mentioned, this presentation is going to talk about what's been happening with the town's pension debt with Calpers over the last several years. It's been a couple of years since we've been in front of you. It's been four years since the town went out and restructured a large portion of that Calpers debt with a bond back in 2021, so we thought it would be timely. Right now, the town has an $8.8 million unfunded liability with Calpers. It's fairly evenly split between the miscellaneous and the safety plans. One piece of good news is that Calpers did beat their goal last year with their investment returns. They earned 9.3%, so we do expect the town's UAL to drop down below $8 million when those new reports are published this summer. As some of you may recall, back in 2021, the town took advantage of the low interest rate environment and issued bonds to pay off about 19 million of UAL at that time, and you locked in a 3.09% interest rate. So we'll, we'll touch upon what the overall outlook looks like, inclusive of that debt as well. Just want to be clear that this presentation is really focused in on the town's Calpers debt and the pension bond, and it's not, it does not include any of the shared costs for the Central Marin Fire or police authorities, so just want to make that clear. As the city manager mentioned, the town has been very proactive in taking the savings that were created through that pension bond and setting them aside, both in the 115 trust, which has grown to close to $4 million, as well as the other internally held reserve. And we'll get into some analysis on how the town can use that moving forward to help mitigate the burden of rising pension costs on the general fund. Just a few kind of Calpers 101 slides. Calp, you know, the UAL, and we'll get into the definition of that in a couple of slides, was really non-existent 20 years ago. So when the stock market was earning double-digit returns back in the late, early, mid, in late 90s, most plans were overfunded, so there was almost too much money in the accounts. However, over the last 20 years, we've seen Calpers not meeting their investment targets. So if you can see that top box on the right, you can see that their five, 10, and 20-year investment returns have ranged between about 6% and 7%. And while that seems relatively healthy, it is quite a bit lower than what they initially thought they'd earned, which was 8.25% back in the early 2000s. And so as, over the past 20 years, they've started to ratchet down their assumptions on their investment return. That number is currently 6.8%. And this, this update right now is even more timely because Calpers is currently underway with its, what's called its asset liability management study. And this is something they do every four years, and they look at all their different actuarial assumptions that goes into how much all their participants have to pay to keep up with retiree benefits. And so we will learn more this fall, actually this summer and this fall, about what changes there's going to be to their various assumptions. And so always important to keep up with the latest data and factor that into the projections. The other reasons there that can be seen in those bottom-right bullets as to why pension costs are rising for all agencies statewide. I mentioned the, their target investment return assumption changing inflation, mortality rates with people living longer. And then lastly, one big change Calpers made over the last five or six years is that they are forcing agencies to repay the UAL debt over a shorter time horizon. So similar to a mortgage, you have a 20-year mortgage, those annual payments to pay down that debt are going to be a lot higher than if you have a 30-year mortgage where it's more stretched out. This graphic here is taken from the Calpers website, but I think it does a great job of depicting how retirement benefits get funded and where that money comes from. And on the left side of that dollar, you can see that a little over half comes from the actual investment earnings on those assets. In the middle part of that dollar, about a third comes from the employer. So in this case, would be the town of Corder Madera. And then the remainder, about 11%, comes from employees. And I think the important thing to note here is that if you would have looked at this graphic prior to the Great Recession in '08, you would have seen that the left side of that dollar was about 70 cents on the dollar or 70% being made up of investment earnings. And so as Calpers' investment earnings haven't kept up with what they expected, it means that the employers, the town of Corder Madera, has had to pick up that full share. So that, that employer share has gone up from about 20 cents on the dollar up to 34 cents. So a quick look at the, at the two plans that the town has with Calpers. The safety plan is obviously closed, so there's no active employees there, but you are still paying on that UAL debt from the classic employees that have retired. And there's 98 total there. And then the miscellaneous plan is shown up top, and there's 187 covered members. Forty-four of them are active. Important to note there on the left side that there was new legislation that was passed in 2013 to help mitigate rising pension costs in the future. So any new employees hired after that time are part of a Peppera plan. These are lower-cost plans for the town and also slightly lower benefit levels for the employees. But important to note there, and as we've bolded on the bottom left, that nearly all of that unfunded liability that, that you're paying down is attributable to the classic plan. So it's not, it's not being solved by the fact that there's new Peppera plans for new employees. So just to define quickly the two costs that the town makes to Calpers each year. Number one is known as the normal cost. And this is the annual cost that is calculated to keep up with current employees for their future retirement benefits. And in a perfect world, if Calpers were to meet all of their different assumptions, this is the only cost you would ever pay. However, as we touched upon a couple of slides prior, Calpers does not always meet its assumptions, especially its investment targets. And so over time, there's a shortfall that develops. And this shortfall or gap is known as the unfunded accrued liability that's depicted in that chart to the right. And it's really the difference between what the town would need to have in assets right now to be fully funded. That's $78.6 million versus what it actually has in assets, which is $69.7 million. So that difference there, that 8.8 million, is the UAL. It's a large number. So Calpers does amortize that for you over a period of time. They don't expect it to be repaid all at once, but it's amortized over a 20-year period. I do want to note there, it's in italics, that because the, the safety plan, and sorry, there's a typo there, because the safety plan is a closed plan, it's a little unique in that instead of every year, any UAL changes being amortized over 20 years, they're actually capping it at 2039 because that's a closed plan. So every year moving forward, that UAL is just going to get amortized through 2039. But it does, with a fixed term there, it does mean those payments could be a little bit more volatile over the next 14 or 15 years until that plan is fully eliminated with, the UAL is fully eliminated. The chart on slide eight on the left side is a, essentially, both debt, both components of the town's pension debt. So as I mentioned before, about four years ago, four to five years ago, the town issued about $19 million of pension bonds. There's currently about $18 million left outstanding, and that money was used to refinance $19 million of unfunded liability with Calpers. So essentially, the town extinguished $19 million of debt with Calpers that was, you were being charged 6.8% interest rate on, and you modified it into a pension bond at a 3.09% interest rate. And you also fixed out that repayment shape. So those, the, the payments on that bond are locked in until about 2044, which is, or 45, which is the final term of the bond. And then below that, you'll see that's that $8.8 million UAL that you have with Calpers. And that's, you're, you're being charged a 6.8% interest rate on that. And then on the right side, at the risk of confusing the group, we did want to show though what it, what this town's pension situation would look like had you not done the pension bond. And so essentially, all of that debt would have been Calpers' UAL debt, so about $27 million of UAL at this same point in time. And all of that debt would have been charged a 6.8% interest rate. So slide nine, just a quick look of the historical returns for, for Calpers. And we don't really need to focus in on year over year, but we really wanted to present this to show how volatile their returns are. So you can see they've had some really good years above 20% and then some, some big negatives, specifically during the Great Recession in '08, '09, as well as a couple of years back in '22. And the important thing to note is that every time Calpers finishes their year, whether they have a good year or whether they have a bad year, it directly impacts everybody's unfunded liability. So if they have a good year, you'll see a reduction in the UAL about two years later. And then if they have a bad year, if they miss their mark, you're going to see an increase in the UAL two years later. And slide 10 is specific to the town of Corder Madera. So if you follow this from the left side in the gray bars, that gray bar with the black font on top is the unfunded liability each year. And you can see that that was growing and capped out at about $22.7 million in fiscal year 20, which is about the time the town was getting ready to restructure a good portion of that. And then you see in fiscal year 21, a huge drop in that unfunded liability. And there's two things happening there. The first being the town refinanced $19 million of that UAL, so you would have seen a big drop. Plus, Calpers actually had a, a great year. They earned 21.3% return. So in, for that year, you actually were overfunded. Your UAL was actually negative there. But then in the very next year, in fiscal year 22, you can see that that gray bar is back positive again. And in royal blue there, you can see that the UAL bounced up to $7.1 million. And that was directly related to the fact that Calpers had a negative 6% investment return year in '22. So you can see how quickly that UAL could come back when Calpers underperforms. And then it's hovered between 7 and 9 million the last couple of years. Slide 11 is probably from a budgetary perspective, the most critical one. As the city manager mentioned, the town's going through budget discussions and looking out several years ahead. And I think this chart is probably the most important one of the presentation. It shows historically what the town was paying on the UAL in royal blue. In navy blue there are, in, in the navy blue bars are the fixed payments attributable to the pension bond that we talked about. So those payments are locked in. They're not going to change. They're at a 3.09% interest rate. But what you see above that in gray, that's the new UAL that's been added since the time the town issued that bond. And that's really what the town needs to be planning for moving forward. You can see in the purple dotted line, those would have been the payments facing the town had you not done the restructuring. So obviously, quite a bit higher had you not done the restructuring bond in 2021. You can see that the, in '24 and '25, or '22, '23, '24, and '25, those payments have been quite a bit lower. And the town's done a great job of taking those savings and setting it aside in both the 115 trust and the general fund pension reserve. So the 115 trust is at $3.9 million right now, and the two-point, the general fund pension reserve is at $2.1 million. And as you can see, moving forward, those gray bars are rising towards that $2 million level near the end of the decade, and then jumping up to about $2.3 million starting in 2034. Again, the 115 trust has grown incrementally each year since that pension bond was issued and currently stands at $3.9 million based on the latest investment report. And it is invested in a moderate investment portfolio with Keenan, who's your provider for the 115 trust. So the last, second to last slide on 13, what we wanted to show the, the town and the council was how that 115 balance could be leveraged moving forward because it's obviously a strong asset that you have. You've built it up to very healthy levels, and there's probably a point in time in the near future that you can start withdrawing some of those funds so that the general fund isn't having to make these higher UAL payments. And so what we assume for this preliminary analysis is that no more contributions are made. We assumed a very conservative 4% in annual investment return. And then in the orange dotted line there is where, what the general fund would be paying each year. So everything above that orange dotted line, based on this analysis, you could actually pull out funds from that 115 trust and use those funds to help offset your payments to Calpers. So you'd still be paying the same amount to Calpers, which is shown in those gray bars, but just some of that payment would come from the 115 trust, and that would allow you to budget at a lower and more stable level for the general fund. Obviously, there's two Obviously, there's uh two point one million of extra reserves that we did not build into this analysis. But if you were to lump that in um with this or put that into the one fifteen trust, then essentially the town would only uh you'd be able to bring down that orange line to a lower uh level. So in conclusion, the town's taken many proactive measures since doing the restructuring in twenty one. Uh prepaying the annual U A L at the beginning of the the fiscal year is something I didn't touch on. Obviously, building both the pension reserve and the one fifteen trust to uh higher levels. Uh but as we talked about earlier, the U A L changes every year. This year is with the recent stock market volatility, um the fact that Calpers is currently going through their um asset liability management study. There is talk and discussion about potential reductions to the discount rate and other assumption changes like to inflation, which would drive up unfunded liabilities higher. It's just important that this is something that the town looks at, looks at at least once a year, uh probably twice, just because these numbers are always uh moving around. So with that, I'll um open it up to questions, or if I missed anything, Mr. City Manager, please uh chime in.
No, I would just I would just note that the one point going back to slide thirteen. Um twenty twenty five in that table shows our current budgeted twenty four, twenty five amount of about a million dollars of the uh payments on the debt. Uh and then another additional about five hundred and uh I think it's about five hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're paying this year uh to Calpers for the U A L. Uh it's projected next year to go up uh by about two hundred thousand dollars, the U A L payment. Um so about seven hundred and I think fifty thousand dollars. Um but as you can see uh with the strategy or potential strategy, and this is something we'll be talking about over the next year or so, of drawing down on some of the trust funds, you could keep it at that level moving forward without sort of the increases um uh on an annual basis that you're seeing in this chart. Um but it's those are decisions that I think um we'll be just we'll be discussing with the council moving forward. Uh but I just wanted to give you a sense of where um that line is compared to our current budgets um coming both this one and what we're going to see next year.
Okay, just um ready for uh questions, but I'd like to ask just first, is this something that will go to the financial committee for review?
So yeah, this would be something typically we would actually, once we get that committee form formed over the summer. Um once and we'll have new assumptions from the Calpers uh the returns and their uh what they're expecting, we'll bring it to the committee uh and then they'll that will inform um but council discussions on how to use the funds.
Other questions, Jim?
Yes, uh. I wanted to double check.
Your microphone on.
Oh, it is. Oh, it is.
Can you hear me? Okay, I wanted to double check that I'm remembering things properly. The one fifteen trust, money taken out there can only go to Calpers. So you know, that that's one liability. But on the chart on page thirteen, we're in effect seeing two liabilities. One is the pension obligation bond, and the other is the uh uh U A L payments. So the one fifteen could only be used for the gray stuff. But the pension reserve on the in the general fund could be used for any of this. Or for anything else if we change our reserve policy.
Absolutely. Y- yes, in terms of the a payment on on the debt here, you mean, or the U A L. Yeah.
Okay, good.
Anything else, Jim?
No, not now.
Rosa? No? Fred? Eli?
Thanks, I just have two questions. Um first, just to clarify, when we say safety plan versus like miscellaneous plan, the safety plan, that's like a Calpers product name, right? It has nothing to do with our public safety agencies or their uh pension liabilities.
It it actually is referring to the when before the merger and the employees that were associated with the Corder Madera Fire Department.
Okay.
So the town is still responsible for employees that were.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Um so next question then, so it's it sounds like and I I'm still trying to wrap my head around all this, but the safety plan is a closed plan, which has something to do with how it's amortized. It i- is the safety plan disadvantageous to us? I mean, I I realize I if if we're in it, I'm sure we're locked in, and that's why we're in it. But I just want to understand, is that sort of, so to speak, worse debt than than some of the other, you know, the town's other pension debt?
Uh I mean, I think um our advisors can speak to this, but my understanding is it's it's worse in the sense that it 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 has that final day of payment in twenty thirty nine, whereas these other projections sort of go out twenty years in advance.
Okay.
Um but in in the word closed just refers to
Right.
we're no more employees are going into that plan. Um we're now, as I think was mentioned early on, both C M P A and C M F A have their own sort of pension liabilities that are handled through um the J P A authority budgets.
And that's the one that ends in twenty thirty nine?
Safety plan, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and then it just one last question. If we could go back to the slide that had the purple line, I don't remember which uh which slide it, there we go, thank you. Um just, you know, noticing that, you know, in the in the, you know, by the early twenty thirties, we're basically back up to two thirds of the peak that we had sought to avoid in issuing our pension obligation bonds to begin with. Um and and I feel like a recurring theme throughout this presentation was the town must be vigilant. Um, you know, and keep an eye on on where these liabilities are trending. And and I, you know, I think vigilance is great, but it it's only worth so much if you, you know, you have to be able to actually do something with that vigilance. Um and and I, you know, would love to maybe if not tonight, just, you know, flag this for future discussion. I want to make sure that we are having these proactive discussions about what do we do when we start to get out to these, uh you know, you know, these these scenarios in in the early twenty thirties and late twenty twenties where like our our total payment is approaching two million. Um, you know, uh understanding that like, you know, what we've just talked about is is, for example, drawing on the trust or drawing on the, you know, the 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 pension reserve. Um but are is there, is there other stuff that I'm missing? I mean, I guess I'm just wondering like when 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 the advisors here say you must be vigilant, like, yes. What what is that all leading to? Is it just leading to timing when we deploy the the trust fund and the reserve fund or?
Yeah, and and I'll let I'll let uh Mike and and Craig jump in. But for me, you know, staying vigilant, it what we're talking about is these things are constantly in flux. I mean, you see the swings that are happening year over year. And so this shape
Okay.
can can change fairly quickly once new numbers come in and we have to sort of then review. And if it's really a bad sort of looking uh, you know, table and and sort of a trend line, then we may actually need to start thinking about putting, if we can, when we, you know, in the last couple of years, we've had these ending balances. Maybe we do need to actually fund those trusts more or the reserve more. So it's just and then uh and then also, as you mentioned, I think the other component of this, it may be that we do say, look, in order to smooth this line and make it more predictable, there may be a point where we want to say, yes, it's time to sort of start to draw down on the funds gradually, potentially, prudently, not all at once, but in a way that sort of um helps us with our budgetary goals and and sort of long term.
Great, thank you. Were we still waiting for an answer from our consultants? You guys, can you put your faces back on? I want to see your pretty face.
I I think I'm on still, right?
We have a screen share.
Oh, I could take I could take it off. I was going to actually point out one of the charts, though, to answer um a couple of those questions. I think the city manager, I think, answered it uh the same way I would have. But number one, I mean, it's just important to look at these for for forecasting. I think a lot of a lot of agencies um, you know, don't realize how quick, how volatile these payments are. So number one, just making sure everyone understands what's, you know, coming online the next several years. Uh number two, when and when and how much to deploy out of that trust. I think that, you know, relative
Mike?
Yeah.
Bye, everybody. Okay, so let's go back to the meeting with our consultants and then Jim, we'll get to that question.
Yeah, Mike, sorry, but we you were speaking probably and we couldn't hear you, so you're going to have to back up a little bit.
Okay. Should I um should I start now?
Hmm.
Okay, um I'm not sure where I left off, but just to answer the previous few questions, I think uh about the the vigilance and yeah, number one is just making sure that all stakeholders know what what these numbers are and why, so that good decisions are being made uh within the budget. I think relative to Corder Madera, who where you have a pretty sizable trust balance relative to your U A L. I can't say the same for other entities. So I do think, you know, a lot of entities out there right now are are scrambling, trying to find money to put money into the one fifteen. I think Corder Madera is closer to the point in time where you could actually strategically start pulling money out. So I think that's just something to
Hear us, we're not able to hear you right now, so please stand by. Something happening with our sound engineer, I think.
Okay. Maybe you could try, Mike, and sorry, it was it's cutting in and out. You were just about to talk about, we had the relative balance that was pretty healthy. And with that being said, and then it cut out.
Yeah, I I think, sorry, and hopefully it's not on my end. Am I coming in coming through okay?
Now you're okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm hearing you, Mike.
Okay, yes, apologize if it's on my end. But yeah, this I think just also kind of looking at a withdrawal strategy is why we're starting this discussion because it it does look like the town with your strong balances can start really leaning on that trust um to enhance some of the, you know, long term planning for the general fund. I think to the to the question on the closed plan, it's a good one because if you look at this chart here, you could see that that in thirty nine, there's a big drop off. And that's that's attributable to the fact that that safety plan is all of that U A L is always going to be amortized until two thousand thirty nine. And that's a little different than other plans, non-closed plans, that every time there's a change in the U A L, there's going to be a twenty year payment layered on. But the fact is, is that as the town gets closer to two thousand thirty nine, let's say you're in two thousand and uh thirty one, and there's a big impact on the U A L, Calpers is going to only spread that impact out over eight years. So that that means that it's going to be a much higher payment annually than if it had spread that over twenty years. So it's just a a piece of, it's not bad debt or good debt. Every all this debt is at six point eight percent, but I think from a planning perspective, you you're a you you're subject to a little bit more annual volatility than an agency who has all their plans active, where all the U A L impacts are being amortized over over twenty years. So as you get closer to that two thousand thirty nine deadline, it, you know, all these little changes are going to um stack up into big changes annually on that U A L. So it's just something to plan for.
Thank you, and that's exactly what I meant with my inarticulate term about worse debt. But I was trying to get at sort of the 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 terms that it comes with are sort of the the nature of the way it's structured. So thank you.
Yeah, and 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 sorry, uh what and just also why it's important to to maintain some level of of reserve or one fifteen balance because it's really uh specifically for volatility in that plan from what we're seeing.
Okay, Fred, do you have questions?
Yeah, maybe just a couple. Um ju- just looking for some feedback. It sounds like overall, at this point in time, again, without knowing what's going to happen during the summer with the um asset liability study, um how Calpers just operates, that quarter meter in general is in a pretty good position between doing the the pension obligation bonds prior at a three percent interest rate and couple that with um the pension trust and also the general pension trust that we have set up.
Uh if if that was for me, I would say yes. Um I mean, we look at uh many uh many agencies across the state. I would say that, you know, there was a handful that luckily timed the market pretty well in locking it. Those interest rates are now north of six percent. So locking in a three percent, locking in those payments for twenty four years at at kind of a low level has provided a lot more resiliency to handle these these new shocks. I mean, I think this graph here shows what it could have been like without that restructuring. And those payments would have been significantly higher.
Thanks. And then one other question. Do you think going forward, again, I know you you don't have a crystal ball, that we would ever wind up potentially doing another round of pension obligation bonds? Again, I know it would depend on interest rates and there's a number of factors, um but is that a potential strategy going forward?
Uh it it's a strategy, but it's one that is not, you know, there's, I think during that period where Corder Madera issued a bond, there was a hundred other agencies. Over the last two years, there's been zero because the the math just doesn't, it doesn't create the same sort of savings. So I think unless interest rates came down to below four percent again or four and a half, we're probably not going to see this type of fi- financing instrument being used. But it is always uh an option. I would say that your funded, the town's funded ratios, it's close to ninety percent. I don't think going much higher than that is is often recommended anyway. So I think you're in a good position um if that helps answer the question.
Yeah, it does. Um thanks. It sounds like it's all in the timing. Thanks.
Okay, Amy, you have?
Amy Ackerman, Town Attorney. I I just want to let counsel know that uh there was a challenge to pencil uh pension obligation bonds uh that came out of the Sixth District Court of Appeal. The case is currently before the California Supreme Court. So whether or not we could do another round of pension obligation bonds is uh really up in the air. Uh so just want to let let everyone know. Um the briefing's been done. Uh obviously, the league has filed amicus briefs, but uh we don't have arguments set.
Whatever happens in that case, would it affect our existing pension obligation bonds?
Really good question. Um I believe there's sound argument because of the bound bond guarantees that it would not. But that is going, which is why municipal attorneys are very focused on this case because obviously a number of communities have used this strategy, so.
Thank you for that. And Jim has one more question?
Yes, uh. Let me see, the uh pension reserve in the general fund, that's basically being invested in money market funds so that we know that if we need to pull the cash out, it will be there. The Section one fifteen trust is invested in a portfolio. It's a balanced portfolio, but it fluctuates in market value. And as we move closer to being in the twenty thirties, when we think we might have to pull cash out, should we start dialing back the risk profile of the one fifteen trust? And by when I say risk, I mean the volatility profile of the trust.
Um I'm going to, I didn't know if that question was directed at N H A, but from, you know, we have, we aren't investment advisors. So what we typically recommend, though, is yes, you would want to talk to your investment advisor at Keenan, let them know what your proposed withdrawal strategy is. And it does make sense that as you're closer to the time of withdrawing money, that moving down that risk spectrum is probably going to be uh highly recommended by them. So if, you know, there's another party here that we're not talking about. And I I think as you get um, as you refine the plan to withdraw money and the amounts and the years, it's important to communicate that to the one fifteen trust advisor because they are going to make some recommendations as it relates to how much risk you're taking with those investments.
Okay, thank you.
I I would just add, we we pool our one fifteen trust, sorry, that's over here. And with other uh agencies as well, just for efficiencies and of of scale there and and some better administrative costs, a reduction of administrative costs there. But um those conversations, we have meetings once a year with Keenan and the other agencies as part of uh overseeing the trust and and making decisions in those regards. Um and then the other pension reserve currently has been invested in certificates of deposit. And they're they're sort of laddered at six month intervals. Um so that we, yes, we can pull them out, pull them out, but it would be sort of over a period of time if we wanted to do that.
Okay, so
Between about four and a half and five percent right now.
If our questions are answered, we will turn to the public for any comments or questions.
I know I'm in way over my head on this, but I actually have questions. So I was curious as to, and I don't know if you can answer, as to how the funds, how the Section fifteen trust came to be funded? And if we draw it down, can we also contribute funds to expand the the amount of funds that are in it? And kind of the same question with regard to the general fund pension reserve. You know, nowhere in here
I think that's a question for Adam or for our consultants, so yes, go ahead.
I could speak to the and and certainly our council members can actually, uh two of our council members were on the
Just as a point of order, maybe we should finish taking public comment before we Just as a point of order, maybe we should finish taking public comment before we.
Yes, anything else, other questions? Okay. Thank you.
We don't have any hands raised from our Zoom attendees or any emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, so.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilman Beckman. So with respect to the Pension Reserve, as we're calling it, it's a fund within our General Fund that was recommended to be set aside about $2 million. I think it was about two years ago or a year and a half ago, after consultation with the Finance Committee and then with the Town Council of putting that into, basically, as it's described, a reserve in case it's needed to fund the UAL as we go forward. And so it's still sitting there. We invested it in, from, I would say, a unallocated ending balance, which is commonly, you know, at the end of the year, you true up how much you've spent, how many, how much revenue has come in, how much expenditures have been spent. And in the last few years, we've been fortunate to have some ending balances surplus. And then there's decisions about how to invest or where to put those monies. And so the Town Council has been very prudent about putting significant funding into these sorts of funds so that we're looking at long-term at our liabilities and obligations and making sure that we have money available and flexibility, I would say, to address these sorts of issues as they come up. This last year, I think we put another $100,000, or the council did, in the OPEB Fund as well to address our retiree health benefit liabilities as well. As far as the original payments, I think that was also all actually going to have the council members, who maybe who were serving on the Finance Committee or at the council at the time, could probably speak better to exactly where the $3 million came from at the time, I think, or the original investment there.
It was basically available funds at the end of, end of a couple of years. And to answer Karen's question, basically, we're investing in a portfolio of, unless you've changed it, like a half a dozen different mutual funds. Some of them are bonds, some of them are equities, various different types of equity strategies, some growths, you know, some foreign. So it's sort of, you know, it's a typical balanced fund. And, you know, the plus is it, it's grown better when the market's going up. But when the market goes down, a balanced fund goes down as well, which is where it differs from the Reserve at the, in the General Fund, where it's basically various CDs or.
Yeah, pursuant to Town Council Investment Policy, the General Fund investments need to go into very conservative funds and accounts. So such as CDs or money markets or things like.
Great. So we weren't asked to take any action on this, only to receive it. So are there any final comments from the council before we move on? Everybody's good?
Well, I'd like to make one comment.
Go right ahead.
To get, thinking about what it will look like after June 30th of this year, when they, CalPERS has closed the books, and then a year later, they report back. During the first nine months of the year, the S and P 500 index only earned 2.77%. The Bloomberg US Treasury Index earned 4.42%. And so you can expect CalPERS returns to be somewhere in that range. And so, you know, we should expect some bad news.
Thank you for your wisdom, as always, Jim, even if it is not great news. Okay, so with that, I think we can move on to 6B, where we will receive the annual report, not for money going out, but for money coming in, which is, to me, always a much more interesting subject. With the committee chair of the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. I'm sorry, are you trying to get my attention?
Sorry, I think Lorena is going to introduce, once you're, when you're down Mayor of Azia, Lorena can introduce this one as well.
I'm sorry.
Yes. So I was just going to introduce the item and also Chair Gerbosi from the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. The staff report includes the annual report that was approved by the committee at their meeting this year. This is the item where council receives the annual report for the transactions in use tax or the sales tax for the fiscal year. That is approved by the Sales Tax Oversight Committee. And just for some background on the committee, it started with Measure B, the town's previous half-cent sales tax, which was approved back in 2013. And when that was put on the ballot, Measure B contained language requiring a mandatory fiscal accountability, including requiring expenditures to be reviewed by an independent citizens oversight committee, which is how we have our oversight committee today. Those same requirements were carried on when Measure B was replaced by Measure F in June 2018. And so this is something that we do every year. And as a tradition, we have the chair of the committee present the annual report to the council. And we have Karen Gerbosi here today to do that for you all tonight.
Thank you very much for that custom introduction. You can do that on every single one if you want. Karen, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I represent the independent committee. Thank you. I'm not going to go over the report. The report's in your packet. You had an opportunity to look at it. So mostly what I just want to acknowledge is that we're presenting it. And I also want to acknowledge our committee members. So we have Jean Greenbaum, Chris McBride, Carl Spursum, myself, and we have recently added to our committee, Madeline Langveld, I think it's pronounced. So diligent, you know, we're not experts, but we're thoughtful and diligent in our review. And we take our time and here's our report. Thank you. So if you have any questions about anything from the report or.
Would you mind giving us just a bullet point summary of what you think are the most important things we should consider? Executive summary or is that too difficult? I mean, I looked at the report, but I'd love to hear a little more about your thoughts on it.
Well, we're, we're satisfied with how the funds are done. I think there's always a little bit of a mood, given the demographics of our committee, that we want more money spent on the senior services. Does it? You get enough demo? But we're satisfied that, you know, that there's significant funds that are going to, for instance, flood and, and those issues. And that we're also cognizant about the dynamic with, you know, what was spent for the town hall and, and the interest in the payments on that. So there's not, you know, there's nothing that we're profoundly concerned about, you know, like what the heck are these people doing? Though maybe we should, I don't know. And one of the things, I don't know that we had this on last report, but we made a point of including on the report. So next to the dollar amount is the percent that that particular item is of the total that are being, of the funds that are being spent from the sales tax. So as you can see, flood control is almost 50% of how the funds are distributed from the citizens, from the sales tax. I think I wandered into an answer to your question.
Okay, council, do you have questions? Any questions down here, Jim or Rosa? I'll ask one. Are there other areas other than the seniors that you think the town should be looking to invest in? Other than the senior programming? Are there other areas?
After listening to the presentation that I just listened to, you know, I know that we have a, a two and a half million that is kind of a super rainy day fund. And so I don't know if there's an aspect that we should be considering or if funds can come from it to go into those two funds, the 115 and the other one. If those funds can, I think you said the other fund, there are contributions made, but I don't know that there's contributions made to the 115 fund. And, and I don't know if it's suitable for those, for funds to come from the, the sales tax.
Would there be any prohibition on that? Or is that something that can be looked at by the committee in the future?
So, so I think really the, I'll just make a couple of points. One is certainly, certainly the measure, while it, the council had prioritized certain expenditures, it's, it's a general fund tax measure, meaning that it could be used for any purpose that the council deems, determines. And secondly, I would say the purview really of the Oversight Committee is to ensure that the funds are sort of.
Used as they are.
Used consistent with the measure and the priorities that the council has weighed in on and determined are appropriate. So that being said, the answer to the question is the, the funds could be used as determined by the council and the reserve fund included. So there's a two and a half million dollar reserve in the sales tax fund. And theoretically, if needed, if the, if the Town Council determined there was a real need for it, that could be used in other, for other purposes in the general.
A question along these lines, the council used to get reports every year of where the sales tax money came from? Like which stores, which businesses were really producing that income? And we don't hear that anymore. Is there a reason for that?
No, I'm working on a, a, a report that we will get to the council quarterly that shows sort of, it doesn't get into the specific stores. That's not publicly disclosable information. So it's going to be more categories of information.
So is it, is it a privacy thing now that they can't?
Yes.
I figured something.
But you can still get, there is information that we can provide the council, and I intend to at the, actually, the quarter just ended on March 31st. So we'll have a report for you to look at, but it will sort of identify broad categories of where the money's coming from.
We used to love watching the Apple versus Nordstrom, Apple versus Nordstrom, year after year in the competition. But we know we can't do that anymore. Okay. But the town's doing pretty well, right? Year over year, we're still making more in retail than many other communities whose shopping malls are more.
But I think here in the numbers, there's been some, the, the amount that we received this year is down from last year. And we understand the dynamics, a certain point that, that there, that things are dynamic. You know, we, we know that Macy's is closed. And those things affect, and if you put housing in there, they're not going to be paying sales tax. So we're cognizant as a committee of those kinds of factors. And, you know, we discuss them and bring them up and, and observe them.
I'm sure you'll keep a good eye on it, and I feel very confident, Karen. I know you've been involved in the town for a long time and appreciate knowing you're there.
Thanks.
Anyone else comments or questions regarding this report?
Are we on comments or questions, or you want to go to public and then come back?
Yeah, we haven't gone to public comment yet, so let's go to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to weigh in on this item? Anybody online?
No hands raised from attendees online and no emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for comments. Again, we're not asked to take any action, just to accept the report.
No, thanks for your report. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the committee, all the hard work you guys do. Just a couple of things, and I don't know if this is a staff thing, a committee thing or a combination. I would like to see us do a five-year look back on that money and see how it was spent over time, going back again in the last five years or so. I think it's important because sometimes we work silo. So this is good, but if you take the reports, especially like you mentioned on senior programming, I think it's been less than 200,000 last five years we spent on senior programming. And I think that, that goes to transparency also. Sorry. I think also we should potentially look at doing some kind of a five-year financial plan for that money. If we know like flood projects or some projects coming up that are going to be out in years, we can kind of start planning that now. So I think we should look at that. I don't know if that's part of the budget process or not. And then the last one is, I totally agree with you. I know everything's dynamic and changes. I think not just the committee, but I think us as a council, we need to be diligent or diligent and diligent. I think that's a comment that was made in last presentation regarding the sales tax override money, especially with, you know, certain businesses closing, but there's a potential hit for that tariffs coming in. You know, our auto dealers could probably take a hit there potentially, depending on how that plans out. And I know sales tax funds, a lot of our CIP projects, just in general, not from the override. So we just need to be vigilant on that also. So thanks.
Thank you for that, Fred, Adam, I mean, Eli.
Adam, we did have something that was presented to us with regard to five-year.
Yeah, we have, we did provide a five-year look ahead in terms of the CIP and the, the projects that are coming down the road. And so we made sure it's the same information we talked about at our January council workshop and shared that with the Sales Tax Committee. Essentially what we did, we did the look back to last year, where we are in the current fiscal year in terms of sales, sales tax, not only received, but expenditures, and then look ahead five years. And so that's how we intend to sort of use those meetings going forward.
You're just talking CIP, right?
Yes, we did the, exactly.
I'm looking beyond just CIP projects.
Okay.
You know, like the intergenerational center, you know, again, that's going out five years. And in the five-year look back, again, it's on everything. It's not just on CIP.
Correct. And, and, and that, that was noted in the, in the look ahead. And certainly that would be part of our budgeting process, absolutely.
Okay, Eli.
My comments were covered, so I just want to thank Karen and her colleagues on the committee for their work.
Jim?
Karen, I'd like to thank you as well. One thing, we're, we're going on soon to be the second finance manager since Prop, since F passed. We're going on our second manager. And I know it's general revenues, so they can spend, the council can spend it on anything. Would it be useful for you guys to draw up sort of a policy of this is what we think is appropriate for these categories? And sort of get it sort of at a granular level so that, let's say you're talking about, you know, you get a bill from landscape, if it's clearing brush, that's one thing. If you're mowing the grass in town park, that's something else, you know?
Well, everybody that's on the committee comes kind of with their, kind of the concerns that they have in their community, the neighborhood, just like the, the people that shared in public comment. So that one of the members of the committee is like, had some concern about some seawall or whatever the thing is. Now, I'm over there in Meadow Creek Station, I don't care about seawalls. But, you know, so we all do show up with a little bit of those concerns. I don't know that we really drive anything with it, but those kinds of concerns do show up in how we participate.
And I think, Jim, the way that that committee would exercise its opinion and leadership on these issues would be more directly through the council rather than through the committee, because they're assigned, if you look at the assignment, they're assigned with oversight of how the monies are distributed, not so much formulating where those money goes. So everybody brings their own, here's how to fix Corte Madera. And we definitely want to hear that, but I don't think you want to saddle the committee with that task.
Well, to a certain degree, as the chair, I don't even know that I want to encourage it.
Exactly. You'll get your punch list, you know?
Please, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, for all your hard work. Okay, so we can move on, I think, to 6C, which is even more exciting. We get to talk about building fees. So come on up, Team Corte Madera. Oh, Team Corte Madera, it's Amy and Amy. Oh, all right. Oh, we got a full house. Come on up. There's, there's room on the table for the three of you.
I'll just, by way of introduction.
Thanks.
This, yeah, the title of the item, let's just introduce the agenda title. So this is a study session in consideration of updating building and planning fee schedules, including other regulatory fees. And I, I'll start by saying, and just. And I, I'll start by saying and just thanking Amy for taking this project on. This is one of those that I, I really had hoped to get to in my tenure as a planning and building director and wasn't able to. And so I just, the concerted effort, this is a lot of work and energy into, I think, a really important update to our planning and fee schedules, which as it's discussed, hasn't been updated since 2015. And I would also just say, maybe the theme of the night, this is also a relevant topic and something that we discussed during our strategic planning workshop. Again, looking at our projections in terms of our financial outlook, this is an important component of that. And again, just appreciate Amy and the team's work on this. It's taken longer than I'd hoped, going back to my time. And, but you've accomplished it relatively quickly. So we're here for a study session and then I think the idea would be we'd come back, hopefully at the next meeting for action on this item.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Ravazio and members of the council. My name is Amy Lyle. I serve as your community development director. And I also want to introduce our chief building official, Bernie Sape. And as, as much as what Adam said was true, I think part of it is we have Bernie now. A lot of the reason for the delay is we needed a consistent chief building official to come onboard. And I will say this is his one-year anniversary today.
How many?
One. Yes. So we got to work pretty quickly once he was onboard. And then I also want to introduce Terry Madsen of Clear Source Financial. He is our consultant that we hired, who is an expert in, in this work and has worked in a lot of nearby jurisdictions as well. And so together, we've been working on this for quite a few months. Lorena, next slide, please. Thank you for sharing the presentation too. So this is a very meaty item. I know there's a lot of attachments and they're very large. But I will say a lot of it is because there's a lot of regulations around fees. And we also have a lot of terminology and there's a philosophy related to fees. So our presentation, presentation tonight is really going to walk through all of those things. So this is just a little quick agenda of what we're going to talk about tonight. Really talk about terminology, fundamentals, and then go through the, the planning fees, building fees, and some of the new fees that we're proposing, which is related to long-range planning and tech enhancement. And then can we go to the next slide, please? And as Adam alluded to, we also just want to root the conversation back to the direction that you all provided to us. This effort really checks a lot of the boxes when it comes to our staff work plan. The primary piece of this is fiscal sustainability. So we want to make sure that we are, our revenue is, is appropriate and our fees reflect the work that it takes. But then any reductions in those fees really reflect the, the intent of our community related to the direction that we've received. So first, the first item was really to finalize and adopt the building fee schedule. But we also need to take into account discount or streamlining programs related to conversion to electric. And a lot of that came from our climate action committee that has been really focused on this work. And then also to evaluate strategies, to look at accessibility for lower-income community members. So you'll see that there are a couple of components infused into this proposal related to that. And we'll look forward to that feedback as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Terry to provide the presentation.
Well, thank you so much for allowing me to present with you this evening. As mentioned, my name's Terry Madsen. I'm here from Clear Source and our firm helps communities throughout the state identify the cost of providing specific services and then look at strategies for recovering those costs. As Amy mentioned, it's a fairly robust presentation, it's about 30 slides. The first half is really dedicated to this concept of how do fees work? How does cost recovery work in California for a community after community after community? And the second half thinks about Corte Madera specifically. I will do my best to avoid being long-winded. I know you've had a very full agenda. So I'll make my way quickly through the material and then turn it back to you to see anywhere you want to go deeper and, and work on questions and feedback. Perfect? Okay. So just by way of reminder, towns generally use what we call fees and charges as a recovery of the cost of providing direct or specific services. That's what we want to remember. Next slide. And when we think about it broadly, we would say communities use their general fund tax revenues primarily on things that provide general, community-wide benefit. Most of the time we think of these as public work services, public safety services, park maintenance services, and they use mechanisms like fees and charges when they provide direct services. And in this case, what we're thinking about is plan review permitting inspection services. So that's typically what we see in California. Next slide. For this study that the council is receiving information on, it is, it is limited to what we would call service-based fees. So some human is providing a service, plan review, permit, inspection. And it's secondarily limited to the idea of building and planning services. So we always like to highlight what is being examined by the town and what is being considered by the town, but just as importantly, what is not being considered as part of this topic? And so we note that this topic does not consider taxes. It does not consider assessments. It does not consider utility rates. These things that as Corte Madera residents and businesses, we sort of encounter on a day-to-day basis, they are not part of this study. We're dealing with stuff that is periodic in nature and it's sort of like there's a regulatory action driving it. Next slide, please. So then the question becomes, why do towns conduct these types of studies? Why do they adjust their fees periodically? The number one reason is due to legal requirements. Because these are fees and not taxes, we receive guidance from the California Constitution and the California Government Code that say, this is how you recover the cost of fee-related services. This is how we establish the idea of costs. The big idea here is that we are not in the profit-making business. There's the idea of cost recovery, but we don't want to exceed our cost of service when we're dealing with fees. Secondarily, there's this idea that when we recover the cost of providing these services, by definition, you are freeing up your general fund resources to be used for some other Corte Madera service. And then finally, we like to highlight the idea that when we recover our costs of providing these services, it helps us to continue to meet the service level expectation of the community. Next slide. We mentioned the idea of cost of service, cost recovery, subsidy throughout our presentation, throughout the staff report. We just want to highlight these concepts. The idea of cost of service is really driven primarily by this idea of labor costs, salaries, wages, benefits, insurances, as well as the services and supplies we use to provide these outward-facing services to the community. If we drive vehicles, if we receive town direction and support that allow us to effectively communicate with the community and so forth. So that's driving our cost of service. Next slide. We, what we want to remind the council of is that because these are fees and not taxes, they are actually adopted by the town council at the conclusion of a public hearing. And really the way we think about fees is they are intended to be dynamic. So you are going to be asked as a council to consider adopting an updated schedule of fees. But the idea is that it wouldn't be static. It wouldn't stay the same for eternity as your organization changes, as your costs change. You would anticipate adjusting these fees, recalibrating them as legislation changes. You could reexamine them as you receive stakeholder feedback. You could reexamine them. So most agencies we work with now, they're just turning this concept into part of our sort of standard operating procedures, the same way we think about sales tax or property tax. We routinely just consider our fee cost recovery and we make refinements as needed, but we don't leave them unchanged for long periods of time. We've received feedback from the development community that they would prefer ongoing incremental adjustments over long periods of stagnation. Next slide. I just highlighted that idea of cost of service. From a cost recovery perspective, what we want to think about is that idea of if we know our town's costs and if we choose to recover less than that from the receiver of service, that is totally at the discretion of the town council. But we would call that partial cost recovery. And then when we use the phrase subsidy here, it's this idea of the difference between what it costs us to provide a service and what we actually received from the receiver of service. Next slide. So if we wanted to illustrate the concept of cost of service, we mentioned that there's some human providing an action here. And so what we really do is we understand what is our hourly cost of service? And then we think about how long does an activity typically take? So something that's less intensive might be a two-hour task. Something that's more intensive could take many rounds of review and be, you know, many hours. And so those are the two fundamentals that we use to understand what is our typical cost of service? In California, we use the concepts of estimated and reasonable cost of service. So we understand that someone may come through the door and it may go relatively smoothly. Somebody may, somebody else may come through the door and maybe more challenging. We're thinking about the typical estimated cost of service to the town of Corte Madera. Next slide. And as a council, frequently what we think about is this idea of once I know my cost of service, then the council is asked to make a decision of, do I want to adopt fees equal to my cost of service or somewhere less than that? You could have up to cost of service, but not beyond it. And frequently what we hear from councils is this sort of philosophical assessment. What they say is if I see a very clear receiver of service, a very clear beneficiary, then I would target higher cost recovery levels. If I see a beneficiary, but I also think the community benefits here, I might have lower cost recovery levels. The two illustrations we commonly use here are this idea that, let's say I remodel my kitchen and there is a cost to reviewing that construction to make sure it conforms to building code and so forth. As the remodeler of my kitchen, I'm the one that enjoys the enhanced property value. I'm the one who gets to enjoy the new kitchen and so forth. So most communities we work with, they would say that's a clear individual benefit and they would target higher cost recovery levels. Because if they don't, it means that the neighbors and other businesses in Corte Madera are paying for the cost, a portion of the cost of my kitchen remodel versus something like a swim lesson, where they say, somebody clearly benefits here, but we as a community think that giving people access to life safety skills, programming opportunities, recreational activities, there's a community benefit too. And so they would target lower cost recovery levels for that type of activity. Next slide. I illustrated this concept just very briefly, but this shows it in chart form. This is the idea that if we know it costs our town $500 to perform a specific service, but we choose to collect something less than that, that is totally at the discretion of the town council. But we just want to remember the town still incurred the cost. And so it has to be covered from some other town resource and that is typically your general fund. Next slide. So now that, what we just talked about was common to California. It applies to Nevada. It applies to Larkspur. It applies to Mill Valley, just the same as it applies to you. The remainder of this presentation will talk specifically about Corte Madera and we'll talk by broad category. We'll think about building fees and then we'll think about planning fees. And on the building side, what we want to say is that we've thought through the fee schedule, we've thought through the service offerings, you know, what comes through the door on a sort of day-to-day basis or a periodic basis. And we've recommended some restructuring of fees to enhance the correlation between the service the town is providing and the fee collected. Additionally, you know, you have some very common permit categories that are homogeneous in nature. They're, they're low complexity. The town has recommended some fixed fees for those most common minor permit categories. The hope is that that fixed fee structure will allow your applicants to, to more easily forecast what they might be expected to pay. It will allow your contractors to help their customers know what town's permits costs are going to be. And then the fee schedule really does work hard to scale. So a lower complexity project would pay a lower fee. A higher complexity project would pay a higher fee. But all, all those fees are linked to your cost of service. Next slide. Amy mentioned the idea that there are a few categories where some discounting is being asked to be considered by the town council. And so I'll walk through those areas. The first area is around the idea of residential electrification projects. And so I mentioned that idea of cost recovery. And I would say that most of the building fees in the, in the proposed fee schedule target full cost recovery. But I'm going to illustrate a few areas where less than full cost recovery is currently proposed for your consideration. And on the idea of residential electrification, for instance, if you wanted to install electric HVAC components or electric water heaters, or install rooftop solar battery backup storage, those kind of things, less than full cost recovery is targeted from those proposed fees in the schedule. Next slide. Additionally, the California Government Code allows for less than full cost recovery to be targeted for trying to accommodate construction associated with accommodating a disability. So in the proposed fee schedule, there's a note that says, if you're making an improvement to accommodate a disability and you're at least 60 years of age, less than full cost recovery will be targeted from those fees. Also, if you're a veteran and you're making improvements to accommodate a disability, less than full cost recovery would be targeted from that construction that's associated with accommodating your disability. Next slide. And then finally, there's a recommendation that for any construction of affordable living units beyond that base inclusionary housing requirement, there would be less than full cost recovery targeted in those fees. It's important to note here that if, if the town council chooses to target less than full cost recovery from certain fees, it can't put that under recovery on the backs of other fee payers. It is a town, you would be using your general fund to cover that under recovery. Next slide. When we think about the potential fiscal impact on the building side, what we see is that we think there is room for enhanced cost recovery of about $660,000. You will see that primarily we are targeting full cost recovery. There's just those few areas where less than full cost recovery started on the electrification and so forth. The reason we recommend full cost recovery here is because these fees are primarily regulatory and we do see that clear receiver of benefit. And when we do target full cost recovery, we're, we're trying to avoid having Corte Madera residents and businesses pay for someone else's construction activities, right? Next slide. As a council, frequently what we hear from councils is, if I were to adopt these fees as proposed, what would be happening to, to a Corte Madera resident that just wants to do a small construction project, just wants to comply with Corte Madera rules and so forth? And so we pulled up, you know, a handful of common minor residential permits. And what you'll see is that the changes really are not magnitude. In some cases, the permit fees will go down. In some cases, the permit fees will go up slightly. In some cases, the permit fees will go down. In some cases, the permit fees will go up slightly. But really there is not a significant change proposed in the minor residential permit categories. Where we're seeing the enhanced cost recovery is on these larger scale development projects, but your minor permits. We just don't see a lot of change. Next slide. Another thing the council may be considering is if I adopted these fees. Would I be positioning Corte Madera as some sort of regional outlier? And so we do analyze Corte Madera's costs. Totally neutrally. So we do not deliberately position Corte Madera somewhere. What we do is we do a cost of service analysis. We understand what your costs are and then we complete a regional fee comparison. And if anything jumps out to us. We would bring it to council's attention and say, council, would you like to be here? Do we understand Corte Madera properly and so forth? But what we would say is the analysis indicates you're going to see about five slides. I won't talk through each one. But they range in complexity, small project, medium sized projects, larger projects. And over and over, what you're going to see is Corte Madera's proposed fees align really well to the region. So if, if the town council were to say, we would like to move forward with adopting proposed fees. One of the main ways we compare, you know, you have hundreds and hundreds of fees. But one of the main ways we compare amongst agencies is grabbing common categories. These are five very common categories that you can see in other agency fee schedules. And what you'll notice is Corte Madera's proposed fees, there's dark blue bar. And if the clerk could just walk through these next five slides over and over, you're going to see you just fall. Right within the range of the region and that is based on your cost of service, not deliberately trying to get you anywhere. Thank you clerk. So now I'll dive into the idea of planning fees. And in the planning world, because you see less homogeneous type projects. A lot of the ways planning recovers its cost of services through time and materials billing. So they ask for an initial deposit. And then as they perform work for the applicant, they charge time against that deposit. If they need more, if they need to replenish the deposit, they ask for additional deposit at the conclusion of the project. If any funds are left over. They refund unused monies. So that is proposed to continue. What we're recommending is that your initial deposits be. Recalibrated to more closely aligned to what an applicant can anticipate. Paying. So you're having to track them, you're having to go chase them less for deposit replenishment. And then the big idea here is that. You're intending to do cost recovery. And so you want to make sure your hourly billing rate is really reflective of your town's cost of service. And because the hourly billing rate hasn't been adjusted in many years, it's just too low. And so we've recalibrated that hourly billing rate. Again, we've compared your hourly billing rate that we calculated. To hourly planning rates throughout the region and the rate aligns really well to the region. Next slide please. On the planning side, there, there is an additional fiscal impact. But what we want to remember is that even though we target full cost recovery from planning related services. The town still provides unfunded. You know, there, there is planning services that are provided without fee recovery. So the planners are your municipal code experts, they provide regional planning services and so forth. All we're trying to recover is the cost of providing entitlement review and planning permit applications. We're not trying to fund all planning costs. Next slide. Here's just another handful of planning fee comparisons, again, just trying to grab a handful of categories. To get a sense of, is there some general picture that we're seeing? And Corte Madera current is in dark blue, Corte Madera proposed is in dark blue. And for the next five slides, what you'll see is generally you're going to see Corte Madera today is at the lower end of the region. And tomorrow you would just move yourself into the range of the region. Clerk, would you stop at a tree permit fee? There are a couple of. Areas here where you may have less than full cost recovery targeted. So the staff has gone through and thought through. Would we like to target full cost recovery in all service areas or there's some? Where we think it would be logical to target less than full cost recovery. Clerk, would you go to the next slide? Administrative sign permits are one area where less than full cost recovery would be targeted. The idea here is. This idea of beautification, you know, encouraging revamping and refreshing of commercial signage. Next slide. And then appeals is another area that you don't frequently see as a council. You know, you may get a handful of appeals a year. But when the town does. Process an appeal, it is an expensive effort. There's a lot of cost associated with that. There's a lot of time and energy spent. Dealing with the appellant, the applicant and so forth. What we're showing you here is that today Corte Madera is at the lower end of the fee spectrum. Tomorrow, the recommended fee is proposed for adjustment from 300 up to 500. You stay in line with the region, but you would target less than full cost recovery for appeals. And what we would say is we didn't set some of these other agency fees, like we, we don't serve Mill Valley. But we serve Larkspur and Nevada. And we could say that they target less than full cost recovery for appeals. So the amount they're showing is something less than full cost recovery. And staff is recommending that for council consideration. Next slide. Two new fees that Amy mentioned briefly, one is a long range planning fee. You know, periodically you expend. Many, many, many dollars to update your town's general plan, your housing element, your zoning code updates and so forth. And sometimes those costs don't recur annually. You just may encounter them four years from now in significant amounts. This is a fee that would help you earmark funds to offset portions of those costs. So you wouldn't. Collect enough to fund an entire general plan update, but it would help offset the cost of general plan update. Next slide. And then here's one more fee that we see commonly collected by other agencies and that's a. Development specific technology fee. So your development community has expressed interest in online permitting, land management tracking. Those kind of efforts. And so technology fee allows you to recover and earmark costs again. That you may not encounter every year. You have some costs that recur every year, but some of them. Come periodically and this helps you offset those future periodic costs. Next slide. So the idea here is that this is a study session, no action would be taken. But town's recommendation is that on April 15th. You would conduct a formal public hearing to consider the proposed fee schedule. And if the town chose to adopt the fees. The government code says anytime you adopt development related fees. You want to allow at least 60 days from the date of adoption till when they would go into effect. So the proposed effective date would be July 1, 2025. And then just by way of. Two pieces of additional information, the proposed resolution that would come before the council includes an annual inflationary adjustment. So the idea is that you would do these fees periodically, every three to five years. But in the interim years, you would adjust your fees. To align to the change in regional cost inflation and then three to five years, you'd take another look like this and just keep going down that cycle. The other idea is. There was one more thing I wanted to mention. So you have your CPI adjustment and you have your effective date of July 1. Thank you so much for your time and attention. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or feedback on my panel.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Oh, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I just wanted to note one more thing that we've had this fee schedule out into the community for a few weeks now. Really looking for input from the construction industry, from residents, from businesses. And we had a workshop we held with the planning commission and the commission really provided a lot of great input. And so I just wanted to note that there have been some changes made based on planning commission input. And so I just wanted to let you know that one of the changes was that we moved the appeal fee from a thousand dollars down to 500. And there was a lot of discussion around affordable housing and what incentives local government can provide. And through that discussion, we landed at the reduction. In affordable housing, building permit fees to recognize it's beyond what's required for the inclusionary requirement. Before it was just 20% of anything. So. And then also a note that we're proposing to reduce fees for the electric conversion. But our building official noted that in 2027, their electric, these electric appliances will actually be. Required, we will not be able to buy a gas water heater, for instance. So those incentives are proposed to sunset in 2027 when those new laws take effect. And, and that's it. And so, yeah, we look for your questions.
Okay, so let's start with questions. Eli, you got your hand up? Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. And I know it's late, so there's only two areas I wanted to learn more about. One, the reduced, proposed reduced fee for appeals. What was the basis of the original thousand dollar proposal? Was that cost recovery or was that still a subsidy?
It was still less than full cost recovery.
What would cost recovery look like ballpark?
Thirty-two hundred.
Okay, thank you. And I remember San Rafael was over 5,000. Thank you. And then my only other question, I noticed that for the, for the few select areas where we're considering subsidies, some of those proposed subsidies were 50% and some were 25%. Why, why the difference? How did we choose?
A lot of this is based on what's been successful in other jurisdictions to really encourage, for instance, residents to, to. Install the electric water heat pump instead of a gas traditional water heater, things like that. So we will evaluate it to see if we're hitting the mark, but we're hoping to make that. Shift in people's thought process and the, the funds, you know, go to that incentive.
Okay, thank you.
Brett? Oh, Rosa, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a great presentation, very, very helpful. I guess it's sort of piggybacking on. Mr. Beckman's question. Those are, I was wondering how you. Analyze complexity factors, but I'm assuming that's how you arrive at. Do you get 50% cost recovery, recovery or you get 25? So a more, I'm assuming that the more complex. Projects you would want at least the 50% in these.
So I think the, the idea was there was this initial where you would say, if I'm going to subsidize a permit. Let's start by bringing a, the idea of 75% cost recovery to the town council. But when we were talking with the building official for these very minor permits, like a residential HVAC. Change out and a residential water heater change out. We already targeted just slightly less than full cost recovery. At to the, about the 75% level as like health and safety issues. And so to go beyond that, for those specific residential electrification ones that are catching your attention at 50%. The only way to say you are getting a discount beyond. Another Corte Madera resident was to make them 50%.
Got it. Okay.
But the base level is this 75%.
All right. That's, that's very helpful. Thank you. And then. Just so I understand the. The discount given for affordable housing. Oh, so above the inclusionary. So. That's above the amount of, or the number of units that are required. When they are building. So when they go above that, then they get this. Additional discount or is it? Because do they get, they get a discount to begin with, right?
They do not. So the first 20% that we require them to, to construct, there would not be a discount. What we want to do is to incentivize, incentivize going beyond the 20% of affordable units. So it would be anything affordable past the initial 20% that they're already required to do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you answered my other question about how often the fees need to be reviewed. And I think that's really great to just. Okay, that's my, those are my questions. Thank you. Jim?
Yes. My question has to do with the tree permit. Over the next few years, we're going to be under a very amount of pressure to remove vegetation from around houses. Any thought of sort of making a list of. Certain trees that if you take them out, there'll be no fee, for example, eucalyptus, I'm trying to think of.
Italian cypress.
You can talk to the fire marshal and he'll tell you what, what should go.
We, our tree ordinance is in need of an update, but we do have. Certain situations where there are no permits required. For instance, if it's an emergency situation, we don't require a tree permit. But we do have a, a list that's being prepared for replacement of trees. But in general, that tree permit is still required regardless if it's eucalyptus or a redwood. But because there is noticing required, so there is a cost involved in removing that tree. And then we do waive the requirement for a, a tree. A tree, what am I trying to say? The study from a, from an arborist to state whether it is needing to be removed. That analysis isn't required if it's very clear that the tree is dead or is creating a hazard and needs to be removed. So we try to reduce the cost as much as possible using reasoning. But the, the ordinance does need to be updated in some ways. To reflect the new requirements and incentives that the fire marshal would like to have.
Thanks. Great presentation. I like the way you went through the 35 slides. So that's really appreciated. If I can remember, I think we haven't raised our fees in 10 years, correct? Do you see a lot of towns that way where they haven't raised them in that long of a period? And when they do decide to raise them, do you see them trying to tier those fees like over a period of time? Or do they just kind of go for it and just go, hey, we're just going to raise them all at once because it's cleaner?
So I would say that, you know, the same way your financial advisor was talking about like the world before the great recession and the world after the great recession. Before the great recession, it was very common to see decades in between fee updates. Now, remember I talked to you about this idea of it's dynamic, it's gotten much more dynamic in the sense of. Post great recession, there was this idea of a greater focus on cost recovery of specific services. Because most agencies are very resource constrained and they're trying to make, figure out how to make the best use of their general fund dollars. So I would say that most of our agencies are now. Updating their fees and not leaving them unchanged for years at a time. They're doing these inflationary adjustments. And then secondarily about your question of when you've gone a period of time. Do we see most agencies doing like the idea of a phase in approach? I would say we do not see, we do see it occasionally. What usually tells us it's not necessary is the regional fee comparison. So the regional fee comparison indicates. That any developer that works here that also constructs homes in Nevada or Larkspur or Mill Valley or San Rafael is already. Paying these costs. So there's nothing that should be sort of inflammatory. The idea of a phase in would be if you were positioning yourself as potentially inflammatory. Where you said, I saw a certain number that was way at the top of the scale. That would be an idea where you would say, I really do understand that I'm going to position myself. That would be an idea where you would say, I really do understand that I'm going to position myself at the top of the scale and I'm going to do it on purpose, but I'll do it over time. Versus a Corte Madera where you're saying, I'm at the bottom of the scale and all I'm doing is moving myself into the mid range. We would see a phase in less often in that situation.
Thanks. And then the inflation adjustment, is that across all fees? And is that, I'm sorry, is that three and a half percent or is it based upon CPI or some index?
It's based on regional CPI and in the proposed fee schedule, every single fee in the schedule will have a yearly adjustment. It has a column and it says yes or no, because there are some fees where you're limited by the state, you just can't change them. And there's other fees that are a percentage of another that you wouldn't want to change. It'd be almost like duplicated or doubling. So yes, it's, every fee is specifically called out as a logical yes or no for annual inflation, but not everyone is a yes.
Okay. And then based upon that, we don't have to worry then by doing it, using that methodology going forward and going 10 years from now? Guess what? Now we need to do another catch up.
You you will still have to do this idea of a true up. If your costs go beyond, they change more than regional cost inflation. And recently, towns' costs have changed more than regional cost inflation because you're highly affected by insurance costs that other people are not, you know, your liability insurance might go up 75% in a year and mine doesn't. So so what the government code doesn't allow you to do is leave fees unchanged for return, like unexamined for eternity. It says, as a town, we believe our fees do not exceed our estimated reasonable cost of service. And you want to be able to consistently think through, have I logically thought about that? And what we would say is today you've thought about it. Tomorrow, it would be logical to do annual inflationary adjustments, but not for eternity. You would go and periodically check in and say, are my updated fees reflective of my most current cost of service five years from now?
Okay, thanks. And then for Amy and also Bernie, because you haven't talked yet. Do you feel overall that the fees are reasonable? They've been moved, they're moving in the right direction, they've been moved in the right direction? And do you feel, again, comfortable with the fees, including the ones where we're subsidizing?
This will be for me, Fred. Thank you very much for the for the question. So I can say that I have done five fee studies in, well, five fee studies in the last three years. And I would say we were, are 100% well within reasonable target, well within the range. There's no huge, this is not a shock to any contractor or quite frankly, a homeowner either. Our, and some of our fees, as we noticed, they went down for our more general issued permits, and that was by design. I I think we're 100% well within target or range or reasonable acceptable fees.
Just to round that out on the planning side, right now, most of our projects are time and materials deposits and they're around 2,500. Yet, when we get to the end of the project, the applicant ends up paying, depending on the project, 7,000. So what we're doing is really changing the deposit amount to reflect more around what the cost actually is to help manage those expectations and kind of right size what kind of process they're getting into. So that's a really helpful thing as an applicant to know. Instead of, like Terry was saying, you pay 2,500 and then you have to pay another thousand and another thousand as we move through the process. So what we're hoping to do is they make a one-time deposit and then, you know, they're not asked to continue to update that amount.
And then just one last question. When we kind of come to the end of the day, from a budget standpoint, if you add everything together, it may be in a staff report, and I apologize if I missed. If you kind of add everything together, are we kind of like 20% below 100% cost recovery? But plus or minus, are we kind of like in that range?
I think what we said, let me just confirm. We think you're going to be about 65% cost recovery. So there'll still be unfunded planning costs, the costs of your general plan update, you'll get a portion of it, but not all of it. And so you will target close to full cost recovery from building fees. You'll target close to full cost recovery from entitlement review fees, but you'll still have unfunded planning costs. And then you'll target a portion cost recovery from the general plan update and technology. And in the aggregate, it would be about 65%.
Okay, do you know where we're at before, out of curiosity?
We have you at about 30% cost recovery right now.
So we're doubling. Okay. All right. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and then Jim, we'll get back to you. You just mentioned again, the long-term planning fees with general plan and so forth. This may be a dumb question, but who pays those? Where does that money come from?
As of right now, it's the general fund. So for instance, the last thing we did was the update of the housing element. So that was paid through general fund and I think a portion of sales tax.
Sales tax fund as well.
Yeah. So.
That's what I was thinking. There's no outside vendors coming in and paying for this.
There's sometimes grant money that can help alleviate costs, but in general, that is a cost that's incurred by.
And that's, that can be a really big one, right, in here. Okay. And then do you think that these incentives for affordable units, for a greater percentage of affordable units within a development? Do you think that these reductions in permits will be enough to incentivize that? Just your opinion. I'm just wondering.
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
I will say, funding affordable housing is incredibly complex. And you may see other jurisdictions that are really looking at impact fees, which are more expensive to a developer and can can really attract more developers if you're saying, we're not going to charge you impact fees or connection fees, some of those really big ticket things. This is one tiny, tiny component, but it happens after entitlement. So it may help a development that can't pencil get a little bit closer to be able to submit those building permits and actually move forward. But I think what we are trying to do with this is just set us apart from other jurisdictions to say, we we want the developers to come and work with us. So it's almost a cultural statement of, we need this affordable housing. We have policies that have been adopted and we want to be able to incentivize where possible.
And is there conversation going on to consider reducing or waiving impact fees as well? Or is that a whole, I know it's a whole different subject, but while we're on it.
So there 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 aren't currently, I want to say there are some clauses in our municipal code already that essentially allow the council to waive certain fees at its discretion for affordable housing projects. I I'd have to look at it further, but whether that's fees or whether that's, I'm sorry, impact fees or permit fees, I don't know offhand. It's something we can come back with at the next meeting and clarify. There have been state laws that are addressing, trying to address this for like ADUs, for example. But at a larger scale, I think there's also this balancing act of affordable housing. You know, there are services that are needing to provide these projects as well. And those comes with costs as well.
Okay, Jim, final question?
Yeah. When, when you're talking about, we've set the initial fees and then a year later, we're going to escalate them for, you mentioned using the change in the regional CPI. Would be, would it work to be changing the greater of the CPI or the actual full cost of employees? Because we give pay raises every once in a while and sometimes they catch up with CPI, but.
The reason we typically, I would say in 95% of the agencies we work with, we use CPI because it's this readily available inflationary index. And sometimes you might be in negotiations with an employee group and so you may not know what's going to happen with wages. The the town council may be trying to work through a budget. And so the idea here is you would know the CPI, you would know the anticipated change in fees and that could help inform strategy for budgeting purposes. And then also the resolution as proposed does have a cap. So it says, by the change in regional CPI not to exceed 5% per year. That's the proposed language.
Quick question, going the opposite way, there's a ceiling, is there a floor on that?
The floor is zero.
Okay.
So if the CPI went down, you would just leave fees unchanged.
Okay, thanks.
You know that we never reduce fees.
Actually, we're proposing to reduce several.
We are proposing to reduce some fees, but not across the board. Okay, so at this point, we'll ask for any questions or comments from the public about this issue? Anybody? Anybody online?
We do have some attendees online, but they do not have any hands raised and we didn't receive any. Oh, looks like one just went up. Sorry. They have David Bell.
Okay, David, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you. Just one comment. It's beginning of this presentation. It's very good. There was a topic for public input, but I don't think that was covered. When can the public provide input other than right now?
So yeah, this is the first time we're asking for public input on this particular item because we've just finished questioning by the council. So this is a normal time that we would seek public, public input. Do you have something you'd like to comment on?
Yeah, one issue, I just went through remodeling and credit to the town that has already resolved my issue with parking variance. And maybe not pertinent to this, but several neighbors have gone through the process of a lateral replacement. Maybe that's more important to the sewer district. But they've been penalized for not obeying to comply at appropriate time. I just want to bring that to your attention and we'll resolve it later. Over.
Okay, so I think your question is best directed to somebody at staff. So maybe you could send an email to Adam Wolf and he will direct it to the right party so that you can get your question answered. I I was actually having a little bit of difficulty hearing you, so I'm not exactly sure what you were asking.
If I could try to restate it, I think it was just a comment about some concern over being penalized for not complying with the sewer lateral ordinance. Comment.
Okay, thank you very much, David. And I will come back to council for comments. I have a couple if I can get them out of the way. One is that the question of a qualifying disability for a 60-plus-year-old to, you know, put in a ramp or something like that for accessibility. I would like to submit that being 65 or older is a disability. That there really shouldn't need to be any other further qualification. If you're over 65 and you need to build a ramp, you need to build a ramp. I don't think 60 is the right age, but I don't think you should make somebody have to qualify for a disability if it's, if their knees hurt and they can't, or they're, or they're for whatever reason needing a ramp. You know, to submit that you have a qualifying disability, any doctor of a 65-year-old is going to write that letter, but I just don't think you need it. People don't make those changes to their homes unless they need them. It's just my my comment. You don't need any response there. And then my other comment is, I'd really like to incentivize small business signage and small business facade improvements. If there's a way we can incentivize that or reduce the cost of that so that we end up with a more attractive, vital-looking downtown, that's where a lot of our small businesses are. I I think we should make it super easy for those small businesses to improve their appearance with signage if we can. So those are my comments. More comments down here. Who wants to go first?
Happy to jump in. Thank you. Thank you. Fantastic work. You guys did a really incredible, outstanding job with this whole exercise. This is so well thought through, so my my feedback is going to be quick. Wanted to say with regards to the the concept of creating fixed consolidated fees for common minor permits, that is huge. Thank you so much for doing that. That is both like from the town's perspective, working smarter, but from residents' perspective, it just makes life easier. So thank you for doing that. With regards to the recommended subsidies, I think you guys are spot on in terms of the areas and amounts proposed. I think this is a wise and low-cost way to incentivize the types of behaviors that are going to benefit the entire community. So I completely agree with that. One note on the changes from the planning, actually, two notes on the changes from the planning commission's feedback. One, sunsetting the fee for gas, for gas, like water heaters and stuff, sunsetting that in 27 because that's when we expect gas appliances to be phased out. We have no idea what's going to happen in 2027. I would suggest just leaving that language in there without a sunset. If everything proceeds as we expect it to and and those appliances disappear from store shelves, then great moot point. But I feel like why, you know, why not just sort of give ourselves shirty either way? The other thing that I would say is just with regards to fees for appeals, I would lean much more in the cost recovery direction. I mean, this is maybe crazy, but I would, I would actually look at full cost recovery on appeals. I cannot for the life of me imagine why we would want to be subsidizing appeals. I think, you know, we all watch our planning commission very closely. I struggle to think of any time in the seven years that I've been on the council that I've seen the planning commission get a decision wrong on the merits. You know, I I think, I think frankly, unfortunately, a lot of times when we see appeals, it's people who are unhappy with the decisions that were, I think, correctly reached. And I, you know, people have every right to make an appeal, but I don't know that they have the right to have all of us in the town pay for them to make that appeal. So I would, I would recommend that we maybe look more towards cost recovery on appeals. And I think the only other, the only other thing I was going to say was just to note that that at the end of the day, we're looking at 770K more or less in in new cost recovery revenue, which is fantastic. So again, thank you very much. I know this was a huge project, but I think it will be well worth it. So appreciate your work.
I'll mirror a lot of comments that were already made. Appreciate the presentation and all the work that you and staff put into this. The key points for me, it sounds like the fees are reasonable, that we'll just do the one-time, I want to say hit, for lack of better words, instead of trying to tier it or phase them in. I like the idea on the on the discounted fees that were mentioned because it is an incentive. That came from our climate action committee. I would like to see a simple amendment to fees beginning July 1st. I think based upon the timeline, there may be a two-week difference on the 60 days, plus or minus. I just think July 1st, it's a cleaner date and it also aligns with our budget process. So again, that would just be cleaner. And then just going back to past comment, because I know we didn't touch upon seniors at all. We hit disability part and veterans, but I know I was talking to Amy earlier today and I think I mentioned during our strategic planning commission or strategic planning meeting. Instead of trying to piecemeal out fees for seniors, I know Sauce Ludo, and I brought this up again before, they have an age-friendly adaptation builder building permit. I think that's where we should build in any type, we're going to have to build that program out. But that's the place, I think, where we should build in a discounted fee for seniors. And that would cover stuff like ramps, bars and showers, whatever else. I think it's cleaner because again, when talking to Amy, it's really hard to start going. This fees for seniors, it's just too piecemeal. So I think we encompass it by doing that process. I think we're better off and that'll benefit seniors. Other than that, again, good job. Thanks.
Okay, down here.
I agree with Fred and Eli's comments and it was very well done. Thank you.
Rosa.
Yes, I do agree. It was a really well-done report and it, you know, answered all the questions that I had and I'm very, very happy that we're going to have it codified that we raise the fees incrementally, regularly. I think it's much more, you know, I'm for as much cost recovery as possible. I think it's really prudent in that way. We don't have to worry about the future as much with our budgets, with our general budget. So good job and I'm looking forward to us having a chance to get feedback from the citizens as well and see what else, if anything else, we need to do.
Great, everybody. Thank you for those comments and thank you, all three of you, for your report today. Eli, just made me think of one more question if I could. Some of the other towns have a different, on the subject of appeals, which I I do agree, and I hadn't really thought of that, that appeals are a luxury. And I don't think we should be subsidizing them as much as we are. I'd like to see us at least where Larkspur is or or more. So I think they were at 1,000, but they had a different rate for the applicant versus the non-applicant. And is it generally more for the applicant or? And is it generally more for the applicant or lower for the? I, I don't know which way it works, but I think it, it makes sense that the applicant, it would probably be willing to pay more if they're trying to appeal. Whereas, whereas somebody who's like a neighbor who wants to appeal seems like they should be able to do it for a little less. I don't know. But just look at that double, double-tier thing, because I think a lot of the towns have that and it might help us with cost recovery, because.
Can I ask um, if a thousand dollars is the right amount or are you looking for something more? And is there consensus on, on just moving that fee up?
Larkspur's a thousand, right? I think that's what I saw on the slide. Larkspur was a thousand for.
I'm, I'm going to put my marker in the sand. I'd say look towards cost recovery. I mean, we'd, we'd still be well below Sanderfell.
Maybe fifteen hundred.
To the council, you know, um, the count, and the attorney can confirm this, but I feel like at the public hearing, the council can recommend lower fees. But I don't think you could recommend something higher than what we proposed without extending the public hearing because now you'd be adopting something higher than was noticed. So if we did rec, if we did come in with a $3,000 fee and the council wanted a thousand, you could tell us, I adopt this fee schedule as proposed with this one exception, move appeals down to a thousand. But I think we might have problems if we said, here's a thousand-dollar proposed fee and then you turned it to 3,000. I'm not sure on the spot because it's a, it's potentially a development-related fee.
So we could make that change now, but not later?
If they, if we put in a thousand in.
Yeah.
3,000 next week.
Right, but we haven't noticed it yet, so we could move it up.
Now you can, yes.
Yes, yes.
Well, I like the idea of you moving it up and then us coming in and saying, don't you dare charge them then.
I just think it's easier for the council to recommend something lower at the public hearings and recommend higher than what we've noticed.
Sounds good to me.
Councilmember Andrews, is your?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Suppose we set it at 3,200, which I think was the number I saw in there. When would the person appealing uh, have noticed that they can ask to get a reduction down to a lower amount? Would it be built into the appeal application?
Oh, in year two.
Well, I think what we would need to do is in the fee schedule, note non-applicant and what the appeal fee is and the applicant and what the appeal fee is. So then 10 days after a public hearing, the not, you know, either could appeal, but the fee would be based on who they are.
If, if I can add to that, I, I, I'm going to pretty strongly recommend that we keep it the same for both parties in that, in the appeal process. Just from a fair, due process standpoint. I don't know if there's an actual legal reason, but I think that just makes sense.
Okay, um, so, but we would like to see, do we, is there consensus that we would like to see greater cost recovery on the appeals? On the appeals matter? Do we want more cost recovery?
Well, I would say that whatever we choose, it should be the same for both, um, both parties.
Agreed.
Because otherwise it looks like we're favoring one over the other.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
We agree on that. So what about the overall cost? Do we want to raise it past a thousand dollars? Do I hear 1,200? Do I hear? Yes, Carrie.
Just in case it's helpful to you, and again, the town attorney can confirm for me if I'm right, but I feel like I have seen in other agencies where, let's say, council member Beckman and the council sort of fundamentally agrees with this idea of higher cost recovery. I've seen appeal fees where you do target, the appeal filing fee is close to full cost recovery. And if the appellant is successful, then you could refund a portion of the appeal, appeal filing fee. So you have option, so if you're saying I don't want to.
I like that actually, because I feel like I, I would support, yeah. I feel like if, if an appeal is upheld, I think it's, it's, it's the town, the planning commission, the town saying, oops, we got this one wrong. And I don't think that the appellant should be on the hook for that. So I, I like the idea. I would personally support, you know, as far as full cost recovery for an appeal fee, but if your appeal is successful, you get a refund.
So, well, just, I'm sorry. You often have two parties.
Oh, duh.
Right? You have the applicant and then you have the neighbor or whomever who's appealing whatever decision. So, I mean, someone's going to win, so.
But there's only one appeal happening at a time. It's not like there's two appeals at a time.
Phrases the, if the, the appellant would get the refund.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the appellant is correct.
The applicant, is that right?
If it's the applicant, but if, if.
Right, okay, no, I see what you're saying.
Appeals and prevails, what, why isn't the logic the same? That doesn't make sense to me.
We could do some research on this and bring it back at the next meeting.
That sounds great. I think there's consensus that a little bit more cost recovery in this particular area because it's such an expensive thing for the town to do.
And if we leave it where staff comes back to us with recommendations, we don't have to go through another public hearing or anything like that, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Anybody else? Any last comments, concerns?
Do you do park and rec fees also? No, do you? You do? Okay, thanks. We'll keep you mind.
Okay, so we will move on to council reports, I believe. Where's my agenda? And yes, thank you all so much.
I'd like to public, publicly apologize to Councilmember Casissa also, but thank you, Councilmember. I was very excited about having a question, so I, I just, I was looking for more.
Well, we hope to see you again soon and we'll grill you on something good.
Thank you, guys.
All right. I don't have my agenda. Where did it go? Okay, we will move on to council reports, starting with our town manager.
Great, so a couple of reports, just, I think this is all on your calendars, but uh, the Volunteer Fair, April 19th. 10:30 to 12:30 at the Community Center. Um, just really excited for that event. It will be a, you know, we're sort of launching this and I hope it's uh, an event that actually continues year after year for a long period of time, that we establish something that really brings our community together. And uh, really with the goal of attracting new volunteers to all of our great committees and commissions and community organizations, which all do uh, a lot of work for free for our town. I wanted to mention, I also attended the Menke Park Community uh, meeting on March 25th, last Tuesday. I, I would echo some of the concerns that were raised, certainly a lot of residents from the Monocito and Grove area came out and really expressed some concerns about not, not wanting changes to circulation, uh, vehicle circulation and parking in the area. Businesses as well concerned about parking. There were some other discussions about um, potential other amenities that could be added. But on the whole, I think there was general support for the actual improvements or the renovation items, which were relatively minor, um, that the town was looking at and the community foundation were looking at with respect to improving seating and importantly, ADA accessibility as well. Um, I'm going to be, we're going to be, we're still discussing, we had a meeting today about next steps and how we approach that. I probably will be scheduling something for May and as part of sort of budgeting and getting a, getting the council's temperature on sort of its level of commitment or want, what it wants to do with, with regard to budgeting for this in fiscal year 25, 26. So more to come on that and we can also bring the plan at that time as well. There were a couple of items just uh, at our Marin Managers Meeting that I wanted to report on. One, and you probably saw this in the news, um, on the IGA, just the county has adopted a, a, an ordinance related to e-bikes, prohibiting Class II e-bikes for those under 16 years of age. And it comes with some fines as well. I would note that they saw this more as a public health campaign and sort of an educational component, given I think they're acknowledging themselves that enforcement's very difficult for their Sheriff's Department and for CHP as well on some, some areas of the community, uh, of the uh, uh, the county jurisdiction. We're going to be looking at this as well with um, CNPA in this, in the towns of San Anselmo and City of Larkspur as well. I think it's important that we're consistent on that with the other uh, towns and cities that share our police services. So more to come on that. Um, but we are looking at that and just want you to be aware that we're, I'm, I'm aware of that. And I, I think they do want an adoption date or start uh, by July 1st as well. Um, and, and there's a campaign to try to get all cities um, on board with an ordinance. Uh, and then there's also the Sea Level Rise Governance Study. We, we discussed um, sort of the consultant work, AECOM, working on, on that for the county. Uh, and I think they're coming out with recommendations this summer, so we're going to be scrutinizing that and probably want to have a conversation and provide some staff recommendations to council and ultimately perhaps provide some official comment on that this summer. And with that, I will stop my report. We do have the, the State of the Town. I apologize to council members if you weren't um, aware of the uh, change in the date. It's now on April 22nd from 12 to 2 PM at the Community Center on, on April 22nd. That's a Tuesday again, so. Uh, and that is a, that is, is not a town event, but it is actually the Chamber of Commerce event. And with that, that's my report for today.
Any questions for Adam? Adam, can I ask just one question? Could you just fill us in on what the decision was related to the Twin Cities Little League Parade this year?
So in August of last year, um, I sent a letter to uh, the president of the Twin Cities Little League after discussions with him and with sort of CNPA chief, uh, Mike Norton. And uh, asked that he may not pursue this year, um, riding, uh, the event of Parade of Trucks where kids and others get in the back of vehicles uh, in violation of the vehicle codes. And so we um, asked them, gave them plenty of time and said, we're happy to work with you on an alternative event and parade. And that's what happened this year. I'd actually, I think Rebecca participated in it with her son and others. And I, I heard it was a great event. I've also talked to the president of the Little League as well and fully endorsed um, moving it to a different type of event. Uh, and so that's what was, that's what, what happened this year.
Thank you. Okay, reports from council? Anybody? Want to start, Jim?
Well, uh, attended wildfire and nothing to report there. Uh, also, uh.
Councilmember Andrews, just double checking that your mic is on.
I'm sorry, I'm talking away from the mic. Uh, I also uh, watched the TAM most recent meeting. And one thing that I did notice, two things. One is we're probably teed up to get something like $479,000 for uh, one of the projects or at least it's being talked about putting it in the budget. And the second thing is they are forecasting a 1% decline in sales tax revenue. So I don't know whether that, you know, I believe we, we're doing more than that or comparable?
Com, com, we projected um, about flat.
Okay.
So yes, also looking at not seeing increases in sales tax.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I tuned into the RVPA Board Meeting on March 6th. And then um, on the 26th, uh, attended the MCCMC meeting. And on March 27th, um, the, I was invited to a Zoom call by the Marin Realty Association regarding their views and possible resources for assisting the town as it weighs the policies on our short-term rentals. So that was purely, you know, informational um, listening session.
Thank you. Hopefully I have the right day. 3/6, I attended the grand opening of our new pickleball courts. Pat and I actually teamed up, had on doubles and we killed the other.
My first ever pickleball game.
Uh, 3, 3/19, attended Age Friendly Corte Madera Meeting. 3/26, attended MCCMC Meeting. 3/29, attended the Central Marin Emergency Preparedness Fair, um, which was a pretty, it was a great event. First responders were there. Um, NRG, SERP, was representing Age Friendly. Such a great event. Saw Eli there also. And then um, the last, can't remember how many Wednesdays, I lost track of it. Pat and myself and Adam have been meeting on the Intergenerational Center. I think we're making significant progress um, in that direction. So that's it. Thanks.
Eli.
All right, it's been a month. So on March 7th, had a Cal Cities Executive Committee Meeting. On March 11th, had a Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board Meeting. March 12th, a County Sea Level Rise Steering Committee Meeting. This is what Adam had touched on. So Adam, as you know, I'm our rep to that. And as we kind of develop any town comments, well, we can submit comment letters as we want, but I'm also happy to bring anything back to the group directly. From March 13th to 15th, I was attending the Civic Well Policy Conference, which was really awesome. Heard from uh, heard from Wade Crowfoot, who's the California Secretary of Natural Resources. So it was interesting to get his take on kind of flood and fire and where these, where these types of threats are headed. On March 20th, we had a Central Marin Sanitation Agency Ad-Hoc Committee Meeting as well as an MCE Board Meeting. And on March 26th, had another County Sea Level Rise Meeting and the MCCMC Meeting. And then on March 29th, I saw Fred at the Safety Fair and it was fantastic.
And we were both in shorts.
Yes.
And Eli reminds me of when you turn up that podcast to 125%.
Oh, gosh.
I love it. You know, you're listening really fast. Okay, so my report is that I also attended the Menke Park Meeting. There was a good turnout. A lot of them were people who live on Grove and Monocito as the gentlemen who came here tonight. And they do have some really good legitimate points of view. There is though definitely a strong desire for there to be more vitality and pedestrian activity on the square. Traffic calming is needed in some way and we've been, there's a gal who is, uh, that owns the children's paint, pro paint workshop class right next to the butcher, who had a great idea to just do some painting of the road to make it clear that it's, you know, more than just a normal road, that it has a, 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 a bigger meaning to the community. So I think there's some nice ways that we can um, calm the traffic without trying to route vehicles uh, around that. Number two, Adam mentioned the Volunteer Fair. I really want, hope we will all be there. We're pitching it as a way for people to come and meet the community leaders and kind of shop around and see what organizations they want to belong to. So if you want to be with the Lions or you want to be with whatever group, it would be really nice to have a good showing of the council there. Same with the April 22nd State of the Town Luncheon, sponsored by the Amazing Chamber, doing lots of things. It will cost $25 to attend. I don't know if the town's going to cover our expenses for that. No, $20, $25 to have lunch. You may attend free to hear the speaks, the speakers after the lunch is served. But we're keeping the price of the lunch down to hopefully attract a lot of people to come. And then on April 30th, this will be the um, Corte Madera hosting the MCCM Meeting. And Rebecca and I are, are working on planning that, but um, it will be here at Town Hall. And we're going to serve food. This is the idea. If anybody wants to weigh in, please let us know. We're going to serve food, maybe just um, hearty appetizers so that we don't have to do plates and forks, just finger foods from restaurants in town. And the um, program, the proposed program is that we hear from the Marin Healthy Youth Partnership, who came, who, who presented a, a really wonderful um, presentation to their own group a couple of weeks ago, asking for stronger uh, laws to prohibit promotion of tobacco products to underage smokers, which they're, you know, they don't do flavors anymore. We, they, we, we got that banned, but now what they're doing is price promotions where they're doing entry-level samplers of, of, of lower-cost tobacco products. And they're hoping that we will at least eliminate those and by, by letting them. And by, by letting them present to the entire Marin County group of electeds, we, we get, we save them time in going to have, in each municipality individually. They are even talking about possibly asking municipalities to ban sales of tobacco products entirely, which has only been done by two California cities, Beverly Hills and Manhattan Beach. So would Corte Madera be a good number three or maybe the county as a whole? So it's something to talk about and I think it'll make, for a really good meeting to hear from the teenagers and also open it up for questions for people to ask them about anything they want, whether it's e-bikes or depression, mental health, health issues for teens. It's really, we were thinking it would be kind of a teen, a night for the teens to be heard. Sorry, I'm going rambling on. The past MCCM meeting was John Carroll, who was the head of the Department of Education. I don't know how many of you were there, but he did say that he was pushing for the Twin Cities to join the rest of the county and offer transitional kindergarten. We are the only municipality that does not currently issue, does not currently offer transitional kindergarten. And I raised the point that I've been told that it's because there's no demand that we have good preschools here, but he said the demand occurs once you offer it. If you offer it, there's a lot of people who need it that aren't able to afford that. So, okay, I see Amy saying I probably shouldn't be talking about all this, but not an agenda item. And then the only other thing I want to say is Chamber is doing a great job planning the 4th of July. There's some really exciting things this year. We need flatbed trucks. If anybody has extra flatbeds, we want to put some bands on them and have them do a battle of the bands. And some good news that I heard at the Chamber today, year over year, hotel revenues in Marin County are up over 12%. So something's happening that's bringing more people to Marin and that'll be good for the Chamber and, and all of us, we hope. We hope it's also happening in Corte Madera. These were overall county numbers. Okay, so that's all I have and I think that brings us to a discussion of the draft agenda. Does anyone have any comments or concerns about that? So with that, I guess we are adjourned.